This time I'd like to call the work session of October 2nd to order. We'll call please.
Call Brenneman.
Here.
Haley.
President.
Wakes.
President.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a form.
Okay, I'd ask for approval of the agenda.
Any approval of the agenda?
Second.
We'll call please.
Call Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
At that time, we'll move on to the board updates and GM updates. Does anybody on the board have any updates? Hearing none. General manager, do you have any updates?
Uh, no, I'll wait till the regular sessions.
Okay. All right.
Not sure how long. I'm trying to make enough time for us to get to the next two topics.
Okay, so let's just move into the staffing plan.
Okay. But I think this is the official kickoff of our 2025 budget. So yeah, two things to eat up. One is the staffing plan, and then because we're still working on customer service policies, but we're gonna do four chapters in the regular session. You know, we normally do that in a much session. So push that to the regular session and get through three of the titles tonight. So Dennis and Ashley here, so Dennis, if you want to get started.
Sure. Thanks, Bill. Again, Dennis Numavich, Director of Human Resources, and we have Ashley Colt, who's our HR manager with us tonight. So we'll go to the agenda. Two major topics that we're going to cover today is, one is our proposed staffing plan for 2025. There are a number of subjects that we'll cover in that, on that issue. And then lastly, we'll go through staffing trends and benchmarking updates from our previous benchmark study that we did in 2022. That'll be some highlights, some updates to that plan. So first issue, we're going to go through the proposed staffing plan. And move to the next slide, and then one more. And this is the spreadsheet that's going to show our history with regard to our staffing. You go down to the bottom line, across the bottom of the page, you'll see the totals. And you'll notice in 2017, we had a total of 632 positions. These are positions and not employees, not billed positions, but simply positions that are budgeted. So we had 632 positions. What we're going to propose in 2025, all the way down to 545 positions. We're going to recommend cutting out 11 positions from the 2024 budget. So what you'll notice, if you looked at 2019, when we had 620 positions available in the budget, since that time, we've reduced BPU budgeted positions by 75 jobs, which is a significant amount. That's 12% of the workforce is gone with regard to those roles. We've never laid anybody off. We've done it through vacant positions, estimated salary of about $8 million that that saved the BPU. So that's a significant amount of money. And again, in 2025, we're recommending cutting out an additional 11 roles from 556 down to 545. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley. She's going to talk about, well, I want a couple, one more slide, and then we'll turn it over to Ashley. So if we go to the next slide, this is again, a brief summary of what we talked about. 632 positions to 556 in 25, 24, and 545 in 2025. The percentage of our vacant positions, so this, this slide shows you total budgeted position versus that time actual headcount. And you'll notice that in 2017, we had 97 vacant positions that weren't filled by employees at that point. We are down to, in 2024 currently, 551 vacant positions. And if we maintain that 505 employees, which we expect we'll be able to do, filled, filled positions, we'll be down to 40 vacancies in 2025. And that's a decrease from 2017 to 2024, a 15, or from 15% down to 9%. And that's a significant efficiency ratio that shows that we are, we don't have a bunch of positions sitting out there, that we are narrowing that gap down. And that's really a big win for BPU and the rate payers of this community. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Ashley if we can go to the next slide.
Yeah.
Quick question. So from that, and it's great to hear that we were able to do that. Question is, this may be answered later. Have any of those positions been filled by contractor positions or any other positions that are outside our full-time positions? We had to offset those with any particular other areas. Would that be a reduction from workforce, or we are offsetting some of them else?
We are offsetting a few positions with contractors. Those positions that we can't fill with full-time employees. Many of our positions are service-oriented, positions that we use. They'll bring in, perform a service, and they're gone. You know, so those don't fill any full-time roles. We do have a few roles that, when we can't hire somebody at the rate of pay or have different, different working arrangements that we can't provide, where we'll contract with organizations for people to come in and fill certain roles, in particular in IT, or we might have something in engineering where we will fill those, those roles. We are cutting down the number of those contractors. And today, when we fill positions, we're no longer using contractors, except in those service-based roles. We're no longer bringing on contractors unless they are, we hire them internally.
And a subset of that is in your $8 million, you know, there's $8 million that has been factored in, or have you looked in terms of what the net deduction would be of that $8 million in terms of what was offset with those contract employees?
Those will be tremendous, I know, but it should be, and will be a percentage of that $8 million. Right. No, that is not factored into this equation. These are full-time positions where they are employees, not contractors.
They were budgeted previously, right?
Yes. Yeah, so we could budget in a separate budget line item for, say, for instance, line workers. When we have to perform a certain service or we don't have the equipment to do that, and it's more efficient rather than buying a million-dollar piece of equipment, we hire a contractor to come in and take care of that service. So those are budgeted separately from this. These are employment numbers. Yeah, yeah.
All right, next slide for me, please. So this is going to be just a monthly average of where the table consists of the last and what we have completed in '24 of monthly recruiting averages. So this, this data allows HR to check on trends to see if we are tracking differently. Looking at the history of this data, in '24, we, 2024, we are close to the average of what we have seen from 2019 to '23. You can move on to the next slide. So here are some of the trends that, recruiting trends that we are seeing. From 2019 to '24, there has been positive trend in both posted and billed requisitions. And so that is looking at the numbers and the vacancies that Dennis just presented, closing that gap. And there's a growing effort of those workforce demands. The efficiency of the hiring process in 2020, there's a decrease in 2024. So it was 115 days in 2020, now it's at 99 days. That is from the posting of a position. We do have some internal processes that require us to not be able to post it externally. And then it depends on if we're, that year, there's trending of a lot of hard-to-fill positions that will fluctuate the days to fill. There's workforce stability, it's consistent rate of separation when it comes to the positions. And then the new hires have doubled. So in 2023, we're looking at numbers reaching '23 and '24, which if you would look at what, what we had before, it was significantly lower. So you can move on to the next slide.
Two and five, is that per month?
Yeah, so these are monthly numbers. Yeah. So this is a part of our annual staffing review. The management team reviews our overtime trends. So what we use, we use this track overtime to analyze because it will provide valuable insights in our workforce needs and by identifying that there's a shortage in staffing. So we look at it on an annual basis, and then there's other type of emergency looked at, you know, if there was a lot of outages, that we would consider those as part of it. So this is just data that we look at to come to our overall staffing numbers. Go ahead and move on to the next slide. So another trend that we would look at to plan for staffing is turnover. So this, this allows us to forecast the staffing needs and plan accordingly. The BPU has consistently done an amazing job at our overall turnover, which shows that we, we have well above average when it comes to the retention. So currently, the average rate of turnover in the United States is about 17, 17.3%. You can see that we have, on average, ran around 6%. So that's a significant difference. And with government sectors are usually around 20%, and some of the other industries will go well above that. So this is something that we are used to look at and then also see what our retention rates are. So go ahead and move to the next slide. Here is the part of our turnover tracking is BPU will look at, what is the percentage of eligible retirement employees toward our overall headcount versus those that are actually retiring from year to year? With our workforce shifting more into the full-time employees, going into the tier two that has a different retirement eligibility date or timeframe, we predict that these numbers may decrease as we go further into the upcoming years.
And so what, what we're talking about is, you know, we have two retirement systems, tier one, tier two. Tier two program is now has the majority of pension plan participants. And with that is a longer retirement age. So you have to work longer, you have to be older before you retire from BPU. So we expect, like Ashley was saying, that age to, to get, get higher before, as people trend towards retirement, they have to stay a little bit longer.
Yeah. What is that age?
It is 60 years with 30 years of service in tier two. Tier one, it's 55.
Yeah, yeah. Longer too.
Yeah.
So.
Do we currently offer incentives for tier two, I mean, tier one employees to retire early? Do we have any type of early retirement incentives?
No, we currently do not have any of those programs. Go ahead and move on to the next slide. So with you, with an understanding of.
I mean, are we, are we thinking about that, or?
You know, so we thought about it. We thought about it when we were trying to draw down the workforce at Nierman, because if you remember, we shut down all of Quandara operations, coal operation, gas operations, and moved all the employees over to Nierman. With the understanding that we weren't going to be laying off anybody as we shut that plant down. So basically, it caused an overload of that, that Nierman. So luckily, didn't have to lay off anybody. We did talk about offering incentives for people to leave, but you know, our employees started retiring at a rate quicker than what we were thinking about at that time, and we didn't have to, didn't have to consider that any further. It got to get come up.
So is there a plan to get what? To get an actual plan going forward? That's, that's what I'm asking.
There's no plan right now. I don't know that there's a.
A short timer. I'm talking to the HR. I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. I'm joking. Of course, you're going to say there's no plan right now.
I think at one time, there, there was an incentive to get the numbers down. This was before Quandara closed. And I think they moved the age, I think, and that's when the tier one went to 55, or am I remembering that wrong?
That was prior to my time. I think Jeremy or Bill might have.
That's a huge number of people retire, it seems like, when you change something, but I'm not sure what it was.
So that was, and a couple of different things were done. The, there had been alterations made to the multiplier rate. But then ultimately, the one that really did, did what you're talking about was dropping age to 55.
That's what I was thinking.
Currently, with the, the tier one, plant participants are 45 or so percent of our workforce. Tier two is now up to about 55% of our workforce. Dennis mentioned the retirement age. It is actually 65 for the tier two folks.
Well, 60 with 30 is, is a, will give you a. You're not going to make what you were making.
Well, if you're 60 years old, you can go, if you have 30 years of service, provided with no reduction of benefit.
Okay.
The other, what, what we've made another agreement for those folks is they can go prior to that, as long as they're vested. But they do take an actuarial reduction on their benefit at, at that time. And, and you know, we've not had anybody get to that point yet, just because it, it, there, there's not enough, I guess, of those participants that are ready to go.
And, and 65, you can go with five years.
That's correct.
Yeah. There's a, there's, there's.
At full benefit.
Well, yeah, but full benefit is way different in tier two. That's right.
A few hundred and five years, yeah.
So, so it's based on your total contribution into the system versus an average monthly, or your last three years average. It's very different. So to go at 65 with five, you're not going to have put in much, and so your pension will be very minimal.
So for this short timer, you'll see that if you look at the historical data that is here too, you know, we have, we have moved to where our, our workforce is smaller now than it's, than it's ever been. Okay. Back when I started, we were around 1,100 employees. Lots changed over that period of time. And then even closer to where we are today, I think we just got to showing you the slide of where we've reduced, if you could back up a little bit, those five-year history. See, one, yeah, right there, right, right there. Yep, so if you can look at just that change over five-year period, and yeah, I haven't seen the need. I don't know that there is a need. Certainly, if there's something else that happens, if certainly the EPA forces new rules on us, then yeah, we're going to have to consider a whole number of things beyond just the workforce.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm confident the worst numbers person of the board, but I'm going to ask the question anyway. So in 2017, if our full-time headcount that we had, you know, everybody, every position is, is filled, you know, at that, and I understand that you've got your budgeted positions, but we had 535 employees, right? And for 2025, if we filled every position that's budgeted for, it'd be 545, right? In 20 what? 2025? Yeah.
Yeah, that's our.
So that's still 10 more of them, what we were operating with in 2017. Right. I mean, is my math wrong?
No.
Okay.
No, but there's attrition built in, so that all of, all of those positions don't have a positive impact on our budget. I mean, we, we do attrition out some of those, you know, with the anticipation of some of them being filled, and not all of them will be, but, but I know probably three, four years ago, I did ask HR, they, give me a placement of what the value is if we were to try to fill up all of our positions at one time. At that time, it was close to like 12 or 13 million dollars, not counting all the, all the other benefits that go with it, okay? So there's no way we could, we could fill up all those positions, even if we could hire everybody and still have a positive cash flow on our, on our balance sheet. So, so I mean, that's why we're, we're moving, and then you'll see some, some other benchmark comparisons. So we're getting closer to where, where the industry is, where all of our data says we should be. I'm happy that we're at least moving in that direction. I thought that was one of my initial questions when I was on board, when I was looking at the, the available positions and the budgeted positions. My question was, if all those positions were filled, our budget would still be to sustain those employees? And I thought that. Yes. Now, historically, no. Okay, it'll be a very, very close call now, but I haven't looked at, we haven't, we're not there. Check where we are with all the projects and everything else. That's, that's going to be a little harmless.
Yeah, and, and when Bill says attrition, when, when you budget those positions, not all of them are budgeted full salary. So we know that there are a number of positions that, that there's no way you're going to be able to fill within that timeframe.
Okay, you want to go back to the age and length of service? That's very, thank you.
And just, and Rose, to answer your question just briefly. So if you were ever to, to look at doing, you know, an early retirement or retirement incentive, you know, both Ashley and I have been, had experience doing that for numerous organizations. And so we, we know we could react very quickly to, to ensure that we get that done, knowing that if you do, do that, you have to be really cognizant of more people leaving than you expect. And so you have to put curbs on that. And so we are well aware of, you know, having done that before, how, how to do it. It's just, will the need ever be there to do it? Thanks.
All right. So as you can see with the age and length of service history, we, our passive herd average is staying pretty steady from 2017 to where we're at in 2023. So move on to the next slide, please. So here are some of the demographics and tenure trends that the BPU. So on average, our full-time BP employee is currently 47, which has stabilized after increasing to 45 to 40, from 45 to 49 between 2017 and '21. The average retirement age stands at 57, with, with 21% of the employees being eligible for retirement as of September 1st of 2024.
21%?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so there, yeah, that's pretty.
Pretty steady.
Pretty steady of what we've seen. An average years of service is at 12 years. So it has peaked, but it's really like a plus, peaked at 14 years in '21, and now it's decreasing, but it's not as significant. It's a plus or minus two or four, two that you would see the, the changes. So if you want to go ahead and move to the next slide, I'm going to turn it back over to Dennis, and he's going to give you an update on the benchmarks.
All right. So back in 2022, benchmarking with a number of similar utilities. These utilities typically would have electric and water. You know, not every single one of them did, but they were also in unionized environments and Midwest-related organizations. So we tried to get as close as we could in 2022. So we've got the city of Springfield, the city utilities of Springfield is one of the participants. Independence Power and Light, which, when you, when you look at their history, they recently eliminated a power plant, so they no longer have a power plant there from the electric side of things. We have BPU, Lansing Board, Lansing, Michigan of Water and Light, Lincoln Electric, which doesn't have water, and then Rochester Public Utilities, Rochester, Minnesota, which is the smallest of our competitor, comparators that we utilize. So if you go to the next slide, and what we have here is the, the first graph or the first number is our average for the number of proposed budgeted positions. Then you'll see the actual participants. So the first one is City Utility, City Utilities, and we've got Lansing. Then we have the BPU 2022 number and the BPU 2025 number. Then you'll see the other organizations with the last one being Independence Power and Light. The, again, the significant, couple significant differences in those last two. One is Rochester's really small. And then IPL has both eliminated their power plant, and they also are conjoined with the actual city, so they don't report all their positions. So it's not really apples to apples comparison that, that we have with IPS. So as you can see, we've gone from, in, in this reporting, down to 545 positions from 563. And, you know, we're right kind of in the middle of the median of, of those deals. The average is relatively low because of those two smaller utilities that are not really great comparators. So that's the difference there.
Dennis, one thing I ought to add is, I mean, that was kind of on purpose to do that because we wanted to take a subset of utilities smaller than us and some larger than us. You know, and then we're kind of average right in the middle of that entire spectrum. So our numbers work out to where we're kind of right in the middle as well, too.
Yes, and they do consistently. So it's really good news for almost every one of these slides. Go to the next slide, we'll see. Yeah, sure. So where did you get these numbers of employees for CU, Lansing Board of Water and Light? Detailed survey from them. So we, we sent out survey requests. In 2022? Yes. Okay. Because I just did this research this afternoon, and this is also 2022 data, and the numbers are very different than what's here. Yeah. And they're higher. Their, their numbers are? Yeah. Well, we sent the, the survey directly to their finance and their HR teams. I mean, and these are public entities. They're public numbers. They're available.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, they, they may have been helping themselves. I don't know.
Right.
There was a lot of time going back and forth between those two agencies, or those agencies that I was.
We do reach out to one for other, other information as well, too. And labor negotiations, we talked to several of them about where we were there just on budget comparisons, you know, number of other things we're interested in. We got good relationships with all of them, and, and they do freely exchange information with us, and we provide some of our information back to them.
And then I think whenever we did the '22 budget, and I will confirm this, that CU has some bus services, and that was not included in the, because we don't provide those. So some of these utilities may offer services that the BPU does not offer with, with Springfield being one of them. So if you look at their total headcount,
Right.
we don't have the bus services and other types of services that that utility offers. We just really focus on the water and electric numbers.
Right. Rose, they also have Spring that down there, which is an energy telecom company as well that they offer.
And there may be others that, but we're more familiar with the CU and how, how they operate, and they have, do have some differences.
That was my view. We were concerned with taking their number and tying it back to our utility and do apples-to-apples comparisons there. So, you know, we went across the board with every department, every division, breaking this down across all of our operations. You know, what's your headcount, what's some of your positions in some of these different parts of your utility? So that we are, you know, looking at apples-to-apples comparisons.
Any other questions on that slide? Let's see the next one. And so you'll see, this is the administrative support staff part of these numbers. So how big of a support staff do we have compared to the other organizations? And you'll see the average at 37%. BPU in '25 is at 32%. And, you know, you'll notice, you know, you might say, why that change? What we're doing is realigning the services that are like included in the electric utility portion of the budget that really should be in the administrative part. So we've dug into the budget more to. So we've dug into the budget more to put these, these roles into the appropriate departments. And, and so that's the, the slight difference that you'll see, but you'll see compared to the average that the BPU from administrative support staff perspective, we're a little bit, well, we're below the average and below most everybody else, almost everybody else that participated in the study. Go to the next slide. This shows our electric staff versus our comparators. And you'll see our electric staff went down by four percent with regard to, you know, total population of our utility. As far as employees goes, we're right just below the average. And so we're sitting real strong. We're, we're very competitive with our, with our other utilities that we looked at when it comes to our electric staff. And then lastly, our water department, you'll see the water staff's at nineteen percent. The average is fifteen percent with the rest, you know, considering the other, other utilities. So, you know, that's the one area that we probably are a little bit over what the average is. But we also know, you know, that the amount of work, that new work is being done as well as, you know, we have an infrastructure that's relatively old. And so we, to provide that clean water and that safe, clean water, you know, we saw it's important that we're staffed appropriately in the water department to get that done, maybe in comparison to some of the other utilities that we surveyed. And last, lastly, last page, just some of the trends that we see, we achieved a three percent reduction in the overall utilities budgeted positions. And through that, we also optimize our resource allocation, just so we talked about moving the resources into the functional areas that they're going to be more efficient at. We've real, reallocated our resources to enhance the administrative support. We're leaner and more efficient in our budgeted physician structure. We only have forty vacancies as, in two thousand twenty-five, you'll see that we'll, we're planning on forty or less vacancies versus ninety-seven, you know, back in twenty, what was it, twenty seventeen? So, you know, we're narrowing that gap and becoming more efficient from that perspective. And then additionally, we streamlined the electric staff by four percent, aligning our workforce better, even, even better with the benchmark standards. So those are just some of the highlights with regard to the benchmark marking information. So that's our staffing presentation as well as some benchmarking information. Any questions?
Could we go back to the, to the count, the headcount, like one of the first, second slides?
Our staffing line?
Okay. So we're, we're showing that there's in general management, it's going from seven to thirty-five. You're saying that that's because we're realigning. What type of positions are we moving in there and where are they coming from?
So, um, sit here. No, so that's, yeah, in two thousand twenty-five, what, what roles?
Yeah. Okay. So did you guys get your, the authorization documents that summarize what the changes look like? All right. It's just the overall of what the reductions and the additions are. So we can get that provided to you. But what this is, is we are transferring the positions from accounting and finance due to the fact we had some structure changes where they're reporting and Abby joining the CIO. This is the staffing that we are changing. Some of the positions that were moved, our departments that were moving from accounting and finance have now moved into the general management. In addition, there was some positions that was moved from the electric operations and production, and it was moved into our administrative services regarding facilities. And so that is an administrative function. So that's why you would see reduction in the general management increasing and reduction in some of the other areas.
So, so you'll see our carpenters, we had, what, eight to ten budgeted carpenters that did work through, for all the departments. Well, they were housed and the, the budget was attributed to electric operations or electric, electric production, both of those two. It really isn't fair to them to have that budgeted number there because it performed, they, those people performed work around the whole utility. So those positions were moved into the general man. Let's just an example, painters were the same way. Our painters, we transferred there as well. So that's a majority of those.
So with that, there is, uh, there is an internal cost allocation model that we have working. And this allows that model to work even better by putting them in the common area so that it could properly allocate costs across utilities as opposed to waiting on them to move their cost over based on work order. And they, they're still doing that, but it, it also helps with our future cost allocation study in twenty-five that we're planning on doing. And, uh, and, uh, because periodically we need, we need to go do that to see what our internal cost is and how we're allocating, allocating costs across, across the utility. So. So these were not actually people that were involved in the production or in the operation, electric operations are more, it's just common. Right, right. They're, they're, they're performing a common task across the utility. So we're just pulling them out of one department so that eighty, eighty percent of their costs is now being put into a common that allocates it across, you know, appropriately. But no, I haven't hired, uh, what is that, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight new.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, next topic is, we'll turn it back over to the policy committee here. For both, uh, if you want to continue, customer service policy review.
Royals score is one zero. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, they have to win one game to Yankees. I take that back. If you win one game.
You want to talk about the playoffs or you want to do customer service policies? Last I checked, it is still one and nothing Royals. Am I saying, no. No, I'm looking at my own document. I know that surprises this group over here. Um, I, you know, I don't, so this was sent out. I don't know if you guys have seen it though. So I don't know how recently you all saw it. Is this it right now? All righty. Well, a lot of this is, is board stuff. So, and, and you're going to have your chance to throw in why it won't work. But, so I don't know, the board did get this on Friday, I believe. And so I'm confident you spent a good portion of your weekend reviewing for the nineteenth time the customer service policies. And I know that, that you guys are sick of them, but I know that Tom and Brett and I are not. Because we want to get this right. So I, I don't know to the extent anybody read them. I don't think we need to go through the definitions unless Abby, you probably did read it in advance, though.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So I, unless, you know, and you guys can, if you guys see a problem with the definitions or anything after the fact, just send a note to Angela or Bill or Abby and they'll get it back to us without reaching the reply halls and all that. All right. First thing is in two dot zero one, uh, the substantive thing. We began to, we, yeah, we began to talk about this last time. And it was talking about how far BPU can go back to collect an outstanding debt. And if memory serves correct, you know, I'm not even sure what I proposed, but I know Stevie said, I'm good with seven years. Mary said, I'm good with five years. I don't know that we had any input to that yet. And I don't know, David will be like four minutes. So, I mean, he'll be like, you can go back four minutes on an outstanding debt. I mean, we know he wants the shortest amount of time possible, but he'll be back in here soon. So I think we need to agree on, um, we need to agree on what that looks like, right? And, um, it just, just since our last meeting, this has come up yet again. So, um, I, you know, I.
What's the time on when it came up again? What's the timeframe?
Two thousand eight. No, actually that was a different deal. Sorry, that was a different deal. But the other one actually was two thousand eight, too. The outstanding debt was two thousand eight.
Yes.
I don't know why they all come to me. They just come to me. I just, this is where I'm at in my life now. So. So it, so it was, look, we have a debt back here of two thousand eight. It was for, in this particular customer's case, a couple hundred bucks. Customers like I didn't even live here then. I don't know. And so he was having an issue initiating service with us for that outstanding debt. So we do need to move forward on this and figure out something and.
Is that a case of somebody else at that address? Or was that a case of that particular person having an outstanding debt at a different address?
That person was not in the state at the time. They were on, uh, in, what's it called? Training, something training, boot camp. They're in boot camp.
The service had not been changed, had not been disconnected or changed. And so that's why it continued to accumulate in that customer's name.
Okay. So how much at fault are we for?
Well, I can tell you that here's what the customer said, because that's the first time I've heard that. What the customer said is, ask BPU, can you show me, like I was out of state at this time, can you like provide me documents showing me that I, I was at this address or whatever you have, right? And BPU couldn't, nor would I expect BPU to have records that go back to two thousand eight. I don't know what the records retention policy is here. I hope there is one. Don't know what it is. I would expect BPU to have that, right? So, but by that same token, if we can't show this customer that, then why are we trying to? It's like that kid in the movie, I want my two dollars, right? And that's ridiculous. So, and we spent more staff time and more staff resource and management resource. I don't count, right? So we spent more resource and I mean, way more than two hundred dollars in resource trying to resolve that. And so, I mean, I think if, if these guys have, you know, some timeframe to go back, then we're not going to have to worry about that anymore.
But what is the amount of time our documentation would go? That we would have a record?
Obviously not.
Yeah, we go back, and correct me if I'm wrong, we go back as far as we can that we have information on.
And, and I think the documentation we're talking about is the, the records and the retention of those records. We normally keep records for seven years. We can continue, uh, oh, three years beyond that. So we can have a ten-year period that we keep actual documented paper records on our system. We always have the record on our system. And so if a person is gone and then doesn't final their service, then we don't notify them. We just don't find people's services. And so if you don't find your service, your service continues. It's up to the person to find their service.
I'd be curious, staff, whether management or, or customer service weighing in on what Rose just highlighted, which obviously the downside of capping this is losing the ability to scoop an actual bill that was brought up. But if it does take more staff time than we're getting, you know, a payment for, how to use, where do you all fall on that? Yeah, that tension between those two?
And importantly, it took this customer a full five days to get service turned on. And that's not customer friendly. So we're, the, the word on the street is we're hard to do business with, right? We've heard that a bunch of, and that just perpetuates that, in my opinion.
So is there any number that people who just don't finalize their bill and just leave? Do we have any numbers that indicate? Is that something that happens frequently?
I don't know that we have a specific number, and we probably can't get you a number of customers that don't finalize accounts and they leave. However, many times it's customers that do get a final bill, they do leave and do not pay the bill. And so the bill stays, it goes to our collections company. We actively collect for a certain number of years and then the record still stays on our, in our, in our system. And so because it's still in our system, then if you decide to move back to our service territory, we do collect that outstanding debt prior to you being able to get service or when we, at the first indication that it's noticed, because sometimes people change names. When it is found that they do have an outstanding debt, it's either put on there, they have to pay that prior to service, or we will say to pay half of that and then we'll start the service, the other half is doing thirty days or when it is transferred over to their account. So we don't take it.
I think we took a look at some of this going back five years, ten years or longer to see what the financial impact would be. I don't know if you guys have that brought it with you.
So we look back at seven years. And basically this takes all of our write-offs and then any kind of recoveries or anything that we have associated with that. From a dollar perspective, on average over that seven-year period, we have about a three hundred seventy-two thousand dollar write-off. I don't have a number of counts or anything.
Right, right. But that can be small and large.
This is strictly residential.
Okay, but it's gonna be small and large both. There's, there's no, no minimal balance.
Dollar, dollars. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it, it varies, you know, as we went through two thousand twenty, when there was a lot of support, federal funding and everything like that, our write-offs were, were a lot smaller than they were. So that's why it kind of took a overall average. And as a percentage of our overall residential electric or electric and water revenue, it's about point four percent, less than half percent of our revenue.
Guessing this is a difficult number to drill down on. So fine if we don't have it, but that's anyone who's ever, you know, left a bill behind, basically. Do we have any sense of how many of those folks ever show back up trying to start a new? Because a lot of that, we're just never going to see because they're not coming back to try and start service again in our area.
Or they're dead.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't gather the numbers for just looking at write-offs, but I would say we do recover a good proportion of, of the dollars that we write off.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I, and I do know that we do that because a few years ago, we renegotiated our contract that we have with our collections company. Because what was happening is we would write off a debt, that it would go to collections. And then we were still paying for it, but the customer would come back to the utility and want to start service. So we actually collected that. And it would never was because they went to the collections company. So we renegotiated that contract. So now only what they collect and not through somebody that comes back to the utility and, and pays that old debt because they want new service. So, and so it went down considerably because there are a lot of times that customers do come back and they'll pay that debt prior to them getting service.
So I think we also have some numbers on what percentage of money we do collect over a period of time versus what's outstanding, right?
Percentage we do collect over.
Yeah. So over that period of time, you, you know, we got X number of dollars that, that are in write-off. Going through the collection process, we were able to select Y amount of dollars. So just doing.
Yeah, that's a number I, I said I didn't have. That just looks at what we've written off versus.
I, I thought I saw something where a collection agency said, or we had some report that says we are like this amount.
That you're collecting online.
Online. The case that, that Rose was talking about that was in two thousand and eight, did he have, did that person actually owe that money?
Yeah.
Did he, did he realize? He didn't owe. He didn't owe. He didn't.
He did not, he.
Somebody else.
Based off the situation, he was not the person living at the house accumulating that balance. But he had not turned the service off. So somebody else who was living at the house under his name was accumulating that. He was not. He was at boot camp. So he actually was not there.
But somehow it was cut off at two hundred dollars or less than two hundred dollars, I recall.
I think it was two oh eight and some change.
And most of these people that come back, they understand that, that they left with a balance, with owing a balance.
I mean, again, are we talking about less than one, I mean, less, are we talking about a, a tenth of percent? I mean, again, are we talking about less than one, I mean, less, are we talking about a, a tenth of percentage of our budget? Is that what we're talking about right now?
And to be honest, with, 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 with the whole process, we're looking at a timeframe to set. Let's, let's, I mean, you probably look at your study and say, well, within seven years, we would have collected this amount. After the seven year period, the time, the amount that we collect goes down considerably. You know, that's, that's, that's my, my consideration. Uh, and, and that's something that I would, I would be, be comfortable in, in doing. I said in a, a, a timeframe that we, we would say that after this, this amount, we, we, we would be comfortable in, uh, not spending more money or time trying to collect those funds. It'd probably be, be financially feasible for us.
Thanks.
I don't know if they were setting a date. We're just trying to say, if it's seven years, then here's what the current consequences are. If it's ten years, here's what the consequences are. If it's five years, here's what the consequences are. I don't know that we reshape customer behavior in any way. It's just, here's the amount of money we put at stake, and here's the, the amount that will probably be written off. So if the board's comfortable with that, then we can, we can plug in any number. We, we, I think it's responsible for us to talk about where we are, how much money is at stake.
Right. And we, and there's, they don't actively collect that, what, five, seven years? They actively-
After seven.
Seven. So actively collect for seven. After that, there's, they don't, um, go to Kansas Set Off or anything. It's only if someone comes back in. So it, it's not an active collection.
They do that. Kansas Set Off does, the collection agency doesn't. Kansas-
Kansas will.
Kansas Set Off says there is no limit.
Okay.
And the setup program says we can collect. Okay, that's what the Kansas Set Off program is just, if anyone's not familiar with that, is if a person files income tax, then whatever they owe the utility that we've turned over to them as collections, they will collect that out of the utilities before dispersing. Before dispersing there. And there is no statute of limitations they set on that.
Okay.
And that's for the-
They don't set up for themselves active.
Yes. Okay. That's if a person files, if they don't, but they're not actively pursuing them. Again, a person would have to, um, yes, they would file for their income tax, and that's where we would get it, but they're not actively pursuing them. They just don't write off the debt as a limitation.
So Rose, I think we presented kind of what, where we are in terms of write offs, so it is really up to the board to determine where you want to go.
I think just speaking for myself, I'm probably on the larger number of years on that. Not that I'm not sympathetic to it, but at the end of the day, we're asking everyone else to pay that bill. Um, and we're, we're shifting it from one party to it. I mean, we're spreading it across everyone else, but I don't know, point four percent, I think.
So are you at seven? Are you at ten? Where are you?
I'm in the, if, if it were just me, I think I'd be ten. I could live with seven.
David, we're talking about how far we can go back to collect the debt.
Well, I mean, I think everyone knows how I feel about that. I'm sorry.
We do. While you were gone, I said you would say, well, they could go back four minutes, is what I asked. They should go back and watch, that's right.
You know, the exception to certainly new service is certainly, um, that there would be a full perjury resolution of what the delinquency is before any subsequent service. I think we're probably all on the same page there. But how far would we go back? I do appreciate the previous representation of what the case is seen as. What I allege is just one year, but I'm okay with the enlargement of that. As long as it's due notice is given, and, and genuine effort is made for selections, notice is given to, uh, the account holder. Um, I don't know. I think obviously, um, for a period, a little more than four minutes, but, uh, you know, certainly, I'm okay with longer than a year, two years. I just don't know, we can spot use for what our rate of current delinquency is. That presentation was going wrong. And I'm sorry I stepped away. I've just been informed that a family member is, is, has just deceased here in the area.
You know, I'm sorry.
All right, so I'm sorry. And, uh, so I stepped away to take the call while families come in. But I don't know what the, uh, what the, uh, you, you know, the amount of time is, was discussed.
So Lori, can you just quickly recap? Was that seven years or that much?
Right, uh, David, while you were out, so we went back and looked at seven years of what our write offs and every, and together were. And on average, over that seven year period, it's about three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That's about almost half a, half a percent of our electric and water residential revenue.
One year, for one year.
It's an average of seven years worth.
So if you go one year, then you're really going a much higher than that, uh, you're up into those what percent?
Yeah, because back in twenty twenty-one-
Well, I would be willing to change my number if we could reach consensus. I, I could go with seven because Brad said seven. I'm, I don't have to, you know, I, I mean, I, if that will help us reach some sort of consensus, so we can move-
Are you still at your original seven?
Not seven. I said, or ten.
Yes.
Can I just have the board clarify? Are you talking about all collections or just act? Because active collections cut off after seven, but are you talking about making them the same?
This is about if a customer has to pay an outstanding debt before
Okay.
uh, obtaining service.
So all, okay.
Can I clarify on that, too? Because not to get too far on the weed here, but are we saying that the debt is forgiven or that they are able to restart service, but we are still saying, hey, there's two hundred dollars outstanding here. We just don't make fifty percent of it paid ahead of time or a hundred percent of it paid ahead. Are we writing it off entirely?
That was my understanding.
Well, KCC takes a different position with that, right?
Well, the, um, I reached out to a contact at Evergy, um, and so they, they do, so they have a, a timeframe that they go back to collect, and depending on the amount that is, is, um, uh, due to the utility, some of it is required to pay prior to starting service, and then some of it, they will put on the first bill.
What's the threshold?
A hundred and fifty dollars. So if it's a hundred and fifty dollars or less, then they would put that on the customer's first bill and go ahead and start service. Uh, anything over that would be required to be paid ahead of time.
And that is the KCC?
Um, that's, that's their business rule, ever, or the KCC's rule is strictly, um, based off of a term. So, yeah, just how far back you can go.
And that doesn't evolve, whether it's three years old or twelve years old, it's still that threshold of dollar amount rather than years outstanding?
That is if it's over, oh, I'd have to go back. Yeah, I think that's if it's over three years old.
Okay.
Three years for a verbal, five years for a written?
Yes, that's what the KCC has. But they continue, so if you, if same scenario, if you, um, leave an unpaid balance, move out of Evergy territory, move to BPU, go back to Evergy territory, and they find something that's eight years old, um, they will say, hey, you left us with a two hundred dollar bill, and that needs to be collected prior to.
Thank you.
And not to prolong this, my, my only concern, I don't care if it's, if it's four minutes or forty years. My concern is that there's an active awareness that is left vested with the now delinquent account holder that they have a debt, that they know of debt, you know, that, that, um, we're doing future business or for not even having a collection effort, so they were aware of it, they, they noticed that we've heard about to what, you know, brought me here and what others have heard about, but no idea that there was some previous debt that was due. And so my concern, overarching concern through all this discussion, is we are absolutely certain for that the account holder is aware of the stay on debt and how it's counted, and that awareness is no exception.
I mean, is, is an awareness on a credit report enough? Like, it's showing up on your credit report? I mean, because it's gonna show up on a credit report.
Exactly, and so the-
That's not, not a notice.
No, no, it's not. More than something that they're coming to.
So if BPU can prove that they sent three notices of a past debt due before it went to collections, and then it was in collections, and collection company is now going to say, we sent sixteen notices, it's all still outstanding, then it shows up on the credit report, is that enough notice to a customer?
That's what I wanted to know. How long this credit report, how frequently did they-
To show that they did not.
But I mean, that's gonna, I mean, if, if we sent however many notices we sent, I mean, presumably based on our records retention policy, we're gonna likely have, maybe with all of our customers that have outstanding debt, we should keep it forever. How about that? We should keep that, the notices we sent forever to satisfy that concern. Yeah, I hear you, but, yeah.
So what I will say is-
When we ever get to that point, if you're delinquent, every time you get a bill, that's gonna show up, right? You're gonna get a text message that, that you're delinquent. Okay, this is gonna show up. You have an unpaid balance, and if that continues to grow, then you are getting prior notices way before you get to that.
This guy that was in boot camp, it left and
That was-
Didn't, didn't turn the utilities off.
Right.
He's not getting delinquent notices in the mail or, or-
So that would've been resolved, okay?
I, I-
If they service, he didn't have to pay, okay, it's been resolved.
And then that, that's what I'm saying, is that in that case, we handle that.
Yes.
Why can't we do that on? If they, if they come in and they dispute the fact that they, that they have it, we say, okay, it's disputed. We'll turn your power on, and then we'll resolve the, we'll, we'll resolve the problem.
So can I just say this? Can I just say this? Um, that one wasn't turned off, and somebody else was living there, so of course you're not gonna get the final notices. But if you're aware that someone's there, you have to turn the service off. You, you have to actively finalize the service. However, what I'm saying is when you finalize a service, you do get three notices. You finalize the service, we send you a final bill. If you do not pay it after that final bill, you get a reminder notice. If you do not pay it after that, you get a final notice, and after that, then it goes to collections, and then the collection agency collects. The only thing I'm saying, when you say a person has to know that you have to reach out, is when a person finals a bill, they move. We require them to give us a forwarding address. If they don't get the mail at that forwarding address, if they're not picking it up. Some people say they don't know where they may give a relative, but we actively send something to the customer. Now, they're also getting, now that we're doing text messages, they're getting text messages as well. But when account is finalized, they always get three notices prior to us sending it to the collection agency. Three attempts, the final bill, the reminder notice, and the final letter. They're all sent from our, our agency that we, that we're using, which is InfoSim. Prior to that, we sent them ourselves, but they, they do go out.
I'm willing to, to change my position on this, seeing that we're talking about a debt that is owed. Um, I, uh, was, was looking at forgiving the debt, but, um, um, as far as starting service, if I move away and, uh, and I need to move again, not only with the cost of my moving, I would have a cost of, of, of starting service again. If you bring back a bill that, that I owed from before, uh, and want to pay before I can start service, that would present another burden. I would say that arrangements be made where they could pay the bill, uh, over time, then, then pay it all before they can start service. Because I think that's the main problem. The problem is, we're talking about someone not able to start service after they come back into or after they realize it, or get ready to start service, uh, back with BPU that they've had a previous, uh, they're indebtedness with. So I'm looking at, at, uh, allowing them to start service because they're still gonna have a bill, but requiring them to pay needed, I think that should be considered to when we look at the threshold, as you spoke of before. Look, look, look at how much should be, be paid immediately, that should be paid, how much should be paid over time. But they should be able to start service once they move back into the area, because that's, they, they, they would, they would have tho- those costs of moving plus, uh, and a bill as well.
And, and so, um, if I'm not mistaken, I just want to make sure I understand, what, uh, Abby said was they pay half, and then they pay the other half on the first bill, correct?
So there's a threshold, a dollar threshold, and if it's under that dollar threshold, they put that amount on the first bill. But it's not all past debt. And so, um, for example, if, if a customer leaves and don't pay their final bill, let's say their final bill is five hundred dollars, then we're saying that we would put the five hundred dollars on their first bill, hoping that they would pay that plus their current bill.
And that's what you guys do. And, and, and what we do currently is, let's say it's five hundred dollars, we require that they pay two hundred and fifty dollars. And then thirty days later, they want their first bill. We still allow customers-
So they, they're, they're allowed to start service?
And they're still allowed payment arrangement, but yes, the two fifty is due prior to that, but then when that first bill, they still can make payment arrangements through that.
Okay, I was thinking that they couldn't start service.
Okay, so maybe we solve this by taking out the concept of going back X number of years and solve it more by saying that a payment arrangement can be mutually agreed upon between the parties. Are you good with that?
Once established, then indeed, it was, you know, there, there were no stuff, you know, I mean. With what you said, that it would be, that would be a clear manifestation to that it was a debt, I mean, you didn't know you were getting noticed because you were in boot camp, but I mean, or, or whatever, that you knew that it was a interesting debt. So once that notice is there.
Talking about one example, but what we deal with is many examples.
Most recent that we're all talking about.
I know, but, but the policy's not around individual, that's already been-
Now, hold on now. I've sat here for almost a year and listened to a bunch of policies based on one individual, so.
And, but there, there are, there are a lot of unspoken things that come up with people not even moving, people just not paying, putting, putting the bills in other people's name. I mean, there is a whole lot of gamesmanship that's taking place as well, okay? And if anybody thinks that's not true, I'm sorry.
Well, but, but here we are. Now we're back into, we were moving toward, in my opinion, we were moving toward a more, um, uh, than easier BPU to do business with if you're a resident or consumer. And what I'm hearing again is we're getting back to every customer that signs up for service with BPU is in the wrong, every single one.
I see him.
I'm just saying, that's what I, in this conversation.
I didn't say that, but I'm trying to help it. Reach some kind of consensus so we can move forward.
I, I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to change how these, these policies, and these are board policies. These are not staff policies. These are board policies.
Our recommendation was to go back ten years, okay? So we can cut to the chase. This is what our recommendation is. If the board, if that's too long for the board, then you tell us what you want to do, and then we'll, we'll support it. Because they are board policies.
Is it the amount? What?
I don't know. I've heard lots of different things here, so I just suggest to taking that, I just suggest to take the number out altogether. Because everybody seems to be in agreement that if there's a bill out there from twenty years ago, the BPU should be able to collect it. And so, and that's okay, but thi- this is where we get the, the, the rub between, here's what the policy, so the customer knows what the policies are, and here's the standard operating procedures of BPU that the customers never know. Neither does the board, so.
There is no conflict between the two, so.
But how, but we don't know that, Bill. We know that because we're having this discussion.
Okay, but-
That's the only way we know.
Trust us when we say there is no conflict, okay? And we're here trying to help the board get to a decision that, that is, is, that's for BPU, okay?
Well, and if you say after X number of years, we just absolve that amount, does that mean now we're easier to do business with? Does that resolve that?
I, I don't know. I don't know. I'll let you know what calls I get from the customers this week.
Rose, what do you want to do? If you're asking-
I, I don't know. I mean, this is up to the board. This is not just a Rose thing.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm making the case because we've been invested in this for a year. So, but whatever the board has a consensus of. Mr. President, what do you think?
I think I'm with my friends, and my friends are here, so my friends. No, I, I see both sides of it. And I think that, uh, for simplicity, that we set a day, a time, and say ten years, and anything for that or older than that is written off or given. And if it's within that ten year period, then we turn their power on and make them pay the, whatever they owe, and they can do it on a payment arrangement or how, but let's, let's get going.
I think I'm pretty similar to Tom on that. I, I like the ten years, but then, Rose, to your point, being a little bit more explicit to make sure that what's in the policy matches the practice, so that we're describing that accurately. So if it's the half of it or, you know, payment arrangement for the rest, whatever we're doing, let's just describe what we're doing on that.
What about just a set amount of payback?
What about just a set amount of payback, would that be more beneficial?
What you mean?
No matter what their bill is, they have to pay X. Whatever this that went back for ten years and it was five hundred and fifty dollars, you have to pay a hundred and fifty of it back.
Start service.
To start service and then just forget about the rest of it.
I feel like that might be tough um from a staff management perspective.
True. Well, do you think it's making the payment arrangements that's giving us the reputation of being hard to work with? Is that what it is, making those arrangements?
Go ahead.
I will say this, I don't think it's making the arrangements because it hasn't changed since I've been here pretty much. If you, like again, owe five hundred dollars, you pay two hundred and fifty dollars, we turn your service on. It comes out on the first bill, the other two hundred and fifty, however, if you need to make payment arrangements. For the next six months on that amount, that amount goes in there to there as well. Make sure, or do they have to pay that? They have to pay that in that thirty days, okay, I'm sorry, I did stretch that.
But then their bill and their deposit.
Yeah, their bill and their deposit can go on arrangement, so it just, I just wanted to say that we're not trying to. Put all of that upfront because that might be, that may be difficult based on that. But so to me, that's kind of um. I don't I don't think it's probably um that because we only do ask for half. We ask for them to pay that and but if they say that they can't, then it's whatever that amount is. Prior to that, so a- and as Gabby said too, now that we have Flex Pay, which we didn't have in previous years, we can put that out, we tie on that. We can do debt recovery too, and they won't have that, the added cost of having a deposit. Um, so it'll be uh easier, so we can definitely start making sure that that option is offered.
Right, or the obligation of the date to meet a certain payment, because with Flex Pay. Each time you make a payment, twenty-five percent of that goes towards your debt recovery, where if you're on a payment arrangement, you're expected to pay. You're arranged on the due date and then you're billed by the due date, if you don't, when the arrangement terminates.
I think with Stevie's point that some people moving back, you find that all of that and you're trying to get established, it's hard, it would be hard. How to make it easier.
David?
That five hundred dollars just gives five, it's not the four percent, whatever, the five years, however long it is, it's. Uh, it's what the actual. Collection, no charge is anything, it's just that, not four percent.
We pay collections, we have to pay collection charges to collect.
But it wouldn't be passed on to the new, it's not, it's five hundred. I, you know, I think that they're reaching some reasonable problem, I I like five years, I of course. And I tend, I'm thinking about people coming back and me too, again, for me, it's like they knew or should have known. Or every good faith effort was made to make sure that they were noticed of and um five years. But complete extinguishment, I mean, it's after five years, I don't, well, that's equitable either, not for the utility, I mean. You know, I I I wanna see the recovery.
David, I'm unclear doing what you're looking for after that amount of time. So if it's not a forgiveness of it, just an eas- an easier time starting service, if it's a debt that's that many years old?
And that's not, that's the whole thing, I think all of saying, after five years, you can pay half of it, you know, or I mean, or whatever the timeframe is, I mean, you said ten years. You could pay half of what it is, so I really don't know.
I guess what I thought I was hearing is, you could do that if it's one year old, you could pay half of it and then sign up, so there's no. Year cap on that.
Right.
If you restart service with an outstanding debt, you can pay half of it and then have the other half on your bill.
Right.
One year, twenty years, whatever.
The ensuing discussion though is talking about when, if ever, is the the debt absolved.
Right.
And that's what I'm saying, I I personally don't have, that is an issue for me, just so.
But I thought when we were.
Certain point in time, the stale debt evaporates, I I, you know, I could, if it's diminished. But I don't, that's not a, I don't have a problem with the debt remaining. For a certain period of time, I have a problem with people being able to restart or for coming down the blue. Uh, for them to restart or for them to be penalized for some other subsequent account, that's my problem with the policy. And so, you know. If someone comes in right now, they wanna open up service and they go, okay, well, here here you are, oh, we see that you have. Five years ago, um that you have this debt, uh five hundred dollars. You cannot start your service, period, until we get the five hundred dollars. And that's current, and the customer says, I didn't even know I had it. Well, I mean, I I've been paying my other bills or everything else and no one told me, too bad, can't start without the five hundred dollars. That's my issue.
You're not saying that you can't start service, they're saying that you can.
You didn't know about, right, that you didn't know, that that's what I'm saying, that you didn't know that you had it, and that they were able to show.
That that, but what's what, what what I'm saying, what what, and what they say, like you said, I noticed up. And they say that the notice is provided to the bill, to the to the name and the address that the person provides to them. So whether they've been noticed up would depend on whether or not they 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 got their mail at their address. And it is not BPU's responsibility to make sure they get their mail at their address. That's their responsibility to make sure they get their mail at their address. So no matter how many properties they own, if if they if they collect their own mail at the address in which they have their their bill. Then it's their responsibility to get to give to get that 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 mail.
That's true, I'd be concerned for those who have accounts that are in good standing. That all of a sudden getting a supplemental amount or accounted to have, I mean, I'm I'm not speaking to the issue that came up and we're all aware of. The bootcamp provision that we have, there are customers. I know firsthand experience and there are others who share that with me, who have. Hundreds of dollars dropped on their bill, saying it's from a previous unbilled or unnoticed up amount. That does exist, it has existed, certainly my friends here know that um I'm I'm aware of that and that's, and other people have mentioned it to me, believe it or not. It happens.
Okay, so I don't think this policy touches that circumstance at all.
But then.
Well, but I but I will tell you that I think it's related, because what I heard Jeanette say a little while ago is. You know, hey, we may discover this when you're signing up for service or we may discover it otherwise.
Okay.
And I guess what I'm concerned about is, why aren't we discovering it sooner?
Sure.
That concerns me and the.
The writing policy for.
That leads me to the question of, in all of the various audits that we have. Have we ever had a third party audit of our billing and collection at this utility?
Yeah.
We have, when was the last one?
Two, three years, three years ago.
It was a third party audit.
Our internal auditor.
Yeah, well, I mean, like an outside third party audit of.
Yeah.
I I get it, but.
So so to your to your point, when was, when what, when he said the incident occurred? So can you think of why, her question was why, did we not notice it sooner, if if it did happen?
So what I'm going to say is if somebody finals in an account. Then we send them notices and they have to give us a forwarding address, so we can send their final bill and then they get three notices. Now, someone can come back and say that they didn't get those notices. We can't, we, once it goes out in the mail, once we send it, it, those have gone out. And so anyone can come back and say, I wasn't notified. But we make every attempt, and that's why we send three, and then when it goes to the collections agency. They then start doing their discovery to find out, if they can find out what that last address is for this person or a current address. If they apply for credit, they say that they, they start sending out those notices as well. But we make every attempt that we can, three prior to even sending it to the collection agency. We'll make three prior attempts to, and so if a person comes back and says they didn't get those notices. I'm I'm not sure what to do in those instances, but I do know that we made the attempts, the collection agency has us make three attempts before we even send it to them. So we do make those attempts to send a person a final bill. If they don't pay that, then it goes to collections and then we. What we say is then it's up to the collection agency, it's in their hands to make attempts after that for seven years. And after that, if it's twenty years, somebody will say, well, I I haven't, it's it's been ten years, I haven't got any notices, no, you won't because we're not able to. At that time, so if you come back after that time, it has been a long time since we've made any attempts, but we're not legally able to at that point. But if you come back into our service territory, then we do collect on it. So there may be a long period of time where you don't, but there are all of those notices.
Thank you.
To that. I just need to clarify something you're saying, David. Are you saying people are getting these notices and not moving new moves into? Or they're just finding this number on their bill, is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Yeah, concerning question, correct me if I'm wrong, David, the concerning, the concerning question is. You call to start service, we start service, we don't tell you at the time when you start service that you have a previous debt. Then what happens is maybe a month, maybe two months later, we find that debt, maybe it's a few weeks. And then that gets put on the bill after the fact that you've started service, is that correct? Okay.
Right, that that it is hap- happened to me.
Okay.
Okay, person.
That's what I thought.
After the service had been cut on, due diligence, it wasn't the first, it was first many services that it been cut back on. And the service was on and it was going for a month and a half and the notice came. Oh, we found a six hundred dollar uh from thirteen years ago. You know, that that is due, if you don't pay it, then your service, your new service.
Disconnected.
If you need to pay it, and there's no, there was no payment arrangement. And I'm not alone in this, okay, and uh, no, and and there's this is a zero sum game. I'm not gonna pay it, but every service has been subsequently interrupted. So we, so we have a policy that once a service is established. That stale debt won't be added to it, that helps, that eases the concern. If that's in place, that if we turn someone's service on and they're not noticed up prior, you know, like the fifty fifty down or whatever. Then there'll be no other stale debt, so alleged stale debt put on, I could get it back.
I will say, I I'm gonna ask you this because I thought I read it in the the policy as well, KCC. If there is a debt, if there's an active account and a debt is found, they can transfer that amount to the active account. And I'm pretty sure that I read that in there.
I would need to verify, verify that, so um.
However, sometimes it is based on discovery. People get married, people change names, and sometimes what we find out is somebody was a secondary. So if my husband's name is on the account and I'm the secondary person, sometimes it takes some of the reporting that we have to find out. That, oh, you were a part of this debt, you owe this debt and you need to pay it. So there are multiple things that can happen that we may not see it right then at that time.
Yes, yes, no, and I, it, right, and I understand from that perspective what's happening, I just wanted to. Clarify what David's concerned with, what's happening, because it's it's not always immediate, sometimes it's it's happening later and so. I just to clarify.
Yeah, as Rose, I went through those eviter- evitations of how you would possibly know you had outstanding debt. I mean, that there's a lot of, you know. When my husband passed away, I got outstanding debt from the Kansas City Star immediately, like within a month of his death. Because I didn't pay his paper bill, so um so I. I'm sure there's multiple ways that people have been notified. And I can see how it gets changed with the name change or a death or multiple things.
And we will offer payment arrangements.
I understand that extinguishing service things.
So I just wanted to make sure that.
Absorbing someone else's debt, I understand that, but sometimes there are cases I'm aware of, where it's just straight up. Better do service, establish your service, get your service for a month, two months, instead of getting whatever the opening bill is on the service. You open up the bill after a month or two months and there's a surcharge for something, some past due debt. Um, which was not shared with you at the time you're saying, so. And it wasn't a third party like a spouse or whatever, it's attributed to them first. And um I, if we can absolve that or resolve that, that we won't push anything, that we won't turn on the service until all that debt. Is double stuff or made or at least made aware of. I think I'm gonna be, I'm I'll find a policy within ten years, you know, just ten years, whatever.
But again, I go back to, does the, does the, does the, does that number even matter anymore? I mean, because if what we're gonna do is say, look, um before you. As you, as you're a service applicant or anytime you're a customer, that is what's gonna concern me in a second, but. Um, that there's a discovery that there's an outstanding debt owed by this individual. Um, this individual has an obligation to pay that outstanding debt in full, subject to, you know, payment arrangements, if the customer asks for them, right? Um, does there need to be a time frame, I mean, what I would like is a timeframe around the discovery, but that's a separate issue.
I I agree with you though, as long as that process is described and it becomes less about, is that two years down the road or ten years down the road?
So Rose, let me ask you this question, so like discovery, is, that's where I'm going, so is there a way that we can speed up our process around discovery? To be able to have our agents know and retrieve that information quicker than what we currently have in front, available to us?
I assume if we're trying to get money, there is.
And does it make a difference on the information submitted because if I come in with a completely different name?
Right, but I mean, like, is it's four months enough times, a hundred and twenty days enough time to discover that, or is that gonna take like a year?
Right, right, yeah, I think we could, we could put a timeframe on, okay, we start service, we have a certain amount of time.
An eighty day.
Hundred eighty days, six months.
It's, you're exactly right, it's typically like a name change or something before we're able to match up social security numbers. And so like if you get married or divorced or whatever, those are the type of things where we don't, it takes us a little bit of time to match it.
Can we not notify the person when they're signing up, everybody signs up, you know, if if. You know, if something is discovered within a hundred and eighty days, then you're gonna be responsible for.
A past debt that within ten years or whatever the timeframe is determined.
Oh, we're not putting any years on it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, I mean, I guess that really, I mean, this, this, if we don't. I mean, if we're gonna say, hey, it's Wild West, you can go back to nineteen hundred if you want, whenever BPU. There we go, nineteen oh nine, um, right, you're gonna pay that on your heirs, but um. But I mean, if we're gonna go back, then that's, it's, we don't need a timeframe around that, right? But the question is, then what if BPU doesn't discover it within the six months? Because then it still remains outstanding debt, and that's a problem.
Three minutes to go.
I know, and look, we we barely, we didn't even get through one section. Policy committee. It is.
Could we do that?
Let us have a conversation.
He went to ask a question.
Find it after the allotted uh discovery time?
Mm-hmm.
Could we not add it to the bill but then just mail them that statement so they know that it's out there or not?
I mean, I'm gonna tell you as a customer, I'm gonna be upset if you just like put it on the bill.
No, no, and I'm not saying I'll do it, no, that's not what I said, I didn't say to put it on the bill. But we, if it's after the discovery, we won't add it to the bill, but we can just mail them that final statement so they're aware that they owe that money, but we would not add it to the bill.
I wanna, I wanna pull IT and have a whole conversation around discovery to see. How fast we can turn this up, similar to some of the other things we do frequently work on, that will report available quicker. We'll come back and board.
I've entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Wait a second. Uh, roll call please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Wakes.
Hi.
Malvany Henry.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Gonzalez, that motion carries.